February 12th, can I make the call to order? Would you please stand for the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. First item on the agenda will be approval of amendments from the January the 22nd meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with one correction to be made on item number eight. The last sentence in that just vote, motion passes five to nothing. If you could strike out the opposition, both on that.
Second. It is been moved in second to approve the minutes from the January 22nd meeting with the mentioned corrections with the clerk please call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of bills paid in the amount of $173,087.51.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve the statement of bills for $173,087.51. It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid with the clerk please
call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes.
Next item will be request for comments from the public. There being that, we move on to the next item. Consider actions related to issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the TKC KCY LLC project. Scott?
Mayor, council members. Resolution 28, HO4, is a resolution of intent authorizing the city to issue bonds for the TKC KCY LLC project. TKC KCY owns the Federal Express facility at 9140 Wood End Road. FedEx has requested that TKC construct a 103 dock door addition and break room pod to that existing facility. As you know, under Kansas law, there's two benefits to issuing industrial revenue bonds. The first benefit is a project exemption certificate. A project exemption certificate allows the applicant to purchase construction materials free of sales tax. The second benefit is the property tax abatement. In this case, FedEx has not requested any property tax abatement, so the only benefit being granted by these bonds is the use of the project exemption certificate. I should point out that the city's charging a half a percent origination fee, in this case for the issuance of the bonds, which is a $50,000 fee for the bonds. Normally, we do the bonds in a two-step process. The first step is the resolution of intent, and then I come back at a later, and then as the night we hold the resolution of intent, we consider a cost benefit report and also hold a public hearing. However, in this case, because there's no property tax abatement at issue, there's no law legal requirement to do the cost benefit report or hold a public hearing. So the only steps on this one are the resolution of intent and the ordinance. Normally, we break this up into multiple meetings, but in this case, because the only incentive is the exemption certificate, we decided to put both items on the agenda tonight. So the first item is the resolution authorizing the city to proceed with the issuance of the bonds, and the second item is the ordinance, which actually authorizes the mayor to execute the bond documents for the bonds. I should point out, these bonds, like all your economic development incentive bonds, are not the general obligation of the city. The debt represented by these bonds is not the city's debt and it's paid solely from revenues received from the project. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Now, could you remind me when that deposit of $50,000 takes place?
Upon the issuance of the bonds. In this case, the bonds, if all goes well tonight, we plan on issuing the bonds, I believe, on February 28th. So what date the bonds are actually issued will be the date payments received. And these bonds, because they're sales tax only bonds, they're only outstanding for one year, so they'll mature a year from now.
We need two separate motions?
Yeah, the two separate issues, yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2018-04 regarding the, I want to read the whole paragraph, the resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt Resolution 2018-04 regarding intent to proceed with issuance of IRB bonds. Would the clerk please call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Ordinance Number 991 authorizing the bond documents with issuance of the city's industrial revenue bonds for the TKC KCY LLC project.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt Ordinance 991 authorizing issuance of IRBs. Would the clerk please call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes.
Next item will be consider Ordinance Number 991 authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the 5M Limited LP project. It's still here.
I am.
This is the scot in the day.
The mayor, council members, approximately a year ago, the city adopted a resolution of intent for the 5M Limited project, which is a approximately 47,000 square foot expansion of the existing Menart Beach distribution warehouse facility. At that time, the city approved a pilot schedule for this project. We held a public hearing that night, also considered the cost benefit report, and passed the Resolution of Intent 2017-05. As you know, on the tax abatement bond projects, we then come back at a later date and approve the ordinance for the issue. The ordinance before you tonight authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver the bond adventure, the base lease, the lease agreement, and also the pilot agreement. The pilot agreement does contain a requirement that the applicant pay the pilots that the city approved last year, which ranged from $52,000 to $59,000 over the 10-year exemption period. Like all bonds, these bonds are not the general obligation of the city. They're payable solely from the project, and these bonds do go out for 10 years, which is determined by property tax abatement. Because there's property tax involved, in this case, the applicant is paying the 1% origination fee, which will be paid upon the issuance of the bonds, which we anticipate, we plan on issuing these in early March. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Just for reference, this is the building there on, they actually own two separate buildings. This is the one on Wood End that they've expanded, at least their plans was they're moving. That used to be the Briggs and Stratton engine part of their business, and then they had the other building that's on 96th Street. They are relocating from the 96th Street into that building, that's why they needed to expand, to expand their business. And I think if they're intent to probably sell the other building, they may keep it and lease it or sell. And after, we think there's quite a few opportunities for that other building. It's approximately about $40,000, $50,000.
And one thing I forgot to point out that I should is, in this case, the property tax abatement only covers the expanded portion of the property. So whatever's there now will continue to pay whatever taxes it's paying. The only thing that's abated is the expansion piece.
Is that project done?
Yes, I think they have, I think they don't have permanent occupancy, they have the temporary occupancy for sure. But they've been putting in their racks and things in the last couple of days. I've noticed their vehicles are over at that building now, first to the rest of them. I know they've been going through the process of getting their apartment. There is some signage that still has to be put out. I think the other thing I would note, we typically always be listing, but we put an escalator in that. The reason why that fee changes from the 521 up to 596 is we typically put an escalator in there each year, assuming that the value of the building will increase in value over the 10-year period. So we started doing that a number of years ago, and it's fairly typical, it doesn't always happen, but that is one of the bases we generally do in our tax. I can see that it's on this one and the next one. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pass Ordinance 993.
Ordinance 923.
992.
It has been moved in second to approve Ordinance Number 992 authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the 5M Limited LP project. Would the clerk please call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes.
Next item will be consider Ordinance Number 993 authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the Bassmal Company project.
Mayor, council members, a year ago at the council meeting, the council also approved Resolution of Intent Number 2017-06, which is a resolution of intent for the Bassmal project, which is a 49,500 square foot expansion to the existing Bassmal facility. At that time, the council also approved a pilot schedule for this project as well. This is identical to the Menart bonds. These bonds are not general obligations of the city, payable solely from revenues from the project. The ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute the delivery adventure, base lease agreement, pilot agreement for this project also. Again, you know, last year, the council held a public hearing on this matter, considered the cost benefit report, and approved the resolution, and it's now time to issue the bonds for this project also. And again, the property tax abatement applies only to the expansion piece of the facility, not the, not what exists there now.
I'm sorry, I was just going to suggest for public knowledge, if you had just mentioned that origination fee.
Yes. Here again, because property tax is involved, the city's charging a 1% origination fee, so 1% of the bonds, which will be paid upon bond issuance, which we expect to be in early March.
I would just note, in that $80,000, this actual project is really about a $20 million project, but a good portion of this is in equipment, in the equipment purchases, which under Kansas law, those are already exempt from property tax, but if you went by there while they were constructing, and it's an automated facility, you know, part of the easiest way to kind of prefer to, is they involve, people see all that with the robots and do all, it's very similar in that, but it's a large rack system, and it goes up. So it's, you know, it's a large project, $20 million, but the building and the related costs associated with that is the $8 million of what the federal.
This is one of the elevated blockways?
Yes. So now that bigger facility in the back is actually, is robotic, goes, and they put in orders for whatever, and it goes and pulls all the bins, comes to a place, people then sort, you know, and it's in boxes, this way, it goes across conveyor belts and goes to the, to the truck for delivery. And on the other side, where trucks come with new product, it comes across over there and it's sorted into the corporate bins and it goes in, so they can, they can have a lot more product in a smaller space. And the project's actually designed for two additional expansions, whether they ever build those, but the large portion that you see behind it could be replicated to more companies. Again, those are about $20 million each time that they have. It's a more significant project than the $8 million looks like in that sense.
And normally, you wouldn't include personal property in a bond issue, except in this case, the property you're buying is already exempt from sales tax under Kansas law, so therefore, there's no need to include it in the bond issue. Which should result in a much smaller bond issue.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 993 authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the Bassmal Company project.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt Ordinance Number 993 authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the Bassmal Company project. Would the clerk please call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes.
Next item, we consider a recommendation of approval from the planning commission regarding a special use permit for temporary rental assistance on 0526 Richland Avenue and adopting Resolution 2018-05 finalizing distinctly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. David Opik, City Planner, has already introduced this item, this for special use permit for 10526 Richland Avenue. The special issue, or the special use permit is for a short-term or temporary lodging facility, which is basically on the platform of Airbnb and being utilized that way. On December 4th of 2017, the applicant submitted their application to use their existing home as a temporary lodging facility. It's located at the address cited before on approximately 20 acres of land, which is Zoned AGR, which is our agricultural residential zone. Should be noted, in this particular case, the owners are not living on the property full-time. In your packets this evening, at the diocese, background materials explain the operation, give a little bit of business background on it. The house itself is located in the far northeastern corner of the property, so it's quite a ways off of the roadway on Long Drive there. It's also adjacent to a property that we approved, a similar use, a special use permit for a couple of months ago at 10326 Richland, so we have very similar uses occurring here in the same area. The intent is that the lodging will be within the existing home, and that parking will be accommodated by the existing drive-in parking area that's there already, and that's paid. On January 17th of 2018, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to the item. The planning commission recommended approval of the SUP. You'll note in your memo here that put some wording changes in there. They changed the staff wording, recommended a change to the staff wording. The original conditions that the staff put into the staff report were based on commentary that came from the council a couple of months ago regarding when we had a property like this, where the owner did not live on the property full-time. The council's intent was that the special use permit should be granted for one year, ensuring that it would come up for renewal in case there were problems on the property over the problem used. What the planning commission suggested we do with this is that we recommend an approval of the special use permit for a five-year period, but still have an annual review, so they have to come in and do an administrative application. They would not necessarily have to go through all the public hearing processes unless we're hearing complaints about the property. So essentially, the wording changes you see in condition number one reflects that. They would still have to give me an annual application. We would still notify people if we get complaints through the process, then what we would do is we'd bring that back to the public hearing for planning commission consideration, and then your review and approval or denial at that point in time. The other second condition was a wording change that was suggested by the applicant. It was a technical change to ensure that we could get 30 days of rentals. There is a short-term rental stay, so you see that wording change to short-term rental stays shall be 30 days or less, instead of what was originally there, and that's the cross-out language. Staff is supportive of the planning commission's recommendation with those three conditions, and would recommend that you approve the SUP with those conditions as reflected in Resolution 2018-05. Stand ready for any questions.
The three conditions are, the first one is the annual administrative renewal.
Correct.
Second one is the 30-day rewording.
Correct.
That's the first one.
Yes, there's two. Two changes. The third one is in the resolution. Basically, it's just a, if you look at the second part of the resolution, or second page of the resolution, the third one is that the applicant or the operator shall meet all applicable laws, essentially. That's a pretty general condition that we have on all the permits.
Would note that the applicant is with us in Sydney.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2018-05.
Second.
With the two or three?
Three conditions.
Three conditions that the staff recommends.
Second.
We have a motion in second to adopt Resolution 2018-05, but the three conditions are passed. Would the clerk please call roll.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Add.
Yes.
And Ms. Piper was saying that she left Pittsburgh, correct?
Philadelphia.
Philadelphia.
60 degrees back.
Left 60 degrees weather, and it was following her.
It's not here yet.
We advise her, anytime she brings 60 degree weather, she's welcome.
However, but it's not here yet. It's on its way.
It's on its way.
She guarantees it. Did she fly in on an eagle?
Oh, Cowboys fan. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we consider recommendations of approval from the planning commission regarding Edrosell Elementary School project, 1661, 1675, 1801. I don't get that.
South 104th Street.
Okay, South 104th Street, okay.
And the school.
I'll explain the addressing here in just a second. Again, good evening. I'm going to blend three presentations into one. There will be three motions that are needed as part of this. One's the approval of the preliminary plat, the second would be the approval of the final plat, and then the third would be the adoption of Resolution 2018-06, which finalizes the special use permit application. Again, these applicants filed their application on December 4th of 2017 for a property at the three addresses that the mayor mentioned, which is about 14.6 acres of land located on the south, on the east side of South 104th Street. I'll explain the three addresses. The school is actually sited on three parcels of property, and that's why in the county system, there's three addresses. Each of those parcels has an address. One of the reasons we're requiring plating is because those three parcels, one of the parcel lines actually cuts through the middle of the existing building currently. Whenever I have a situation like that, I advise that we replat the property into a single parcel, because it can create any other problems later on down the road with expansions and other items that could come up. And the school district was agreeable to doing the plat as part of that. So there's a north parcel that was a very narrow sliver, then two parcels that are relatively equal with one line that's crossing through the existing school itself. It is in an R1 rural residential zoning district, and the school district does plan on expanding the elementary school on the property. If you look at your packet of information associated with item 8C, you'll see some drawings there regarding the expansion. The expansion of the building is at the back northern corner of the property itself. It's only about 8,000 square feet of expansion. I believe there's a cafeteria and a few other rooms that'll be part of that, which allows them to move some of the functions within the school and then do improvements at a later date within the school to some of the rooms that are there. So I bring that up because that's associated with the special use permit application that's also here. As part of the review process, all the utility providers and the county representatives, the G representatives will provide copies of the preliminary plat for review and comment. We got those comments, the applicant made those corrections, and on January 17th, 2018, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to the plat application and the SUP before you tonight. The applicant and staff spoke at that meeting. We also had one property owner who lives near the school that spoke at a public hearing also. The property owner didn't object to the plat or the SUP, they just brought up several items that they hoped would be addressed through the construction of the project, and the items that they brought up were lighting, security, drainage issues. The superintendent was present at the public hearing, and the applicant's engineers were there also, so they took those comments in. We will watch for some of those things to be addressed as part of the building permit process. So when we get the construction plans, that's when we'll start looking at those kinds of details. Generally, at plat level and at SUP level, we're not doing that as part of the process. I think I have gone through everything here. I just wanted to double check, since I'm trying to cover all three items, I'll make sure I've got everything we need to, oh, in regard to the special use permit, the one thing I do want to note for you is that the reason the school district is doing this is technically, the school is established prior to our current zoning code, so they were used by right in the R1 district under the old code. In the new code, schools are a right that's allowed by special use permit, so they're legally considered a non-conforming use at this point. That's another reason the school district is here, is to clean that up, so now they will be conforming to our current zoning standards. So a lot of this is really administrative, it's not changing the use or the function of the property itself. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
There's no changes to the existing building that need to be done to comply, is there?
No, not for the items that we've got. Now, there will be at some point in time in the construction process, Fire Chief's already stated this to the school district, there will need to be some upgrades potentially to fire suppression systems and alarm and monitoring systems, but he is working with the district on that.
Would any of this, by, fix the address issue, the three addresses?
We got a problem with the address issue all over the place.
That's more from my curiosity.
Well, it will in that, once it's platted to one property, I will address it as one property. The difficult part that we've got right now is that there are three databases that use different addresses for this building and this property. So I've got a mess in that sense, that we've got to clean up databases, and they're not all in our control. So we're going to get those databases cleaned up, give it one address. It's likely that it's going to be addressed 1801, South 104th Street, because that's what the school district currently uses, or it's mainly an address at that location and that site identification. We have some differing issues, and I think it may be because of meter locations, so BPU has one address, which may be associated with one of the parcels at the 1600 level, one of those two, because of the meter location being there. So they send bills to that address, we have another address in one of our databases that doesn't match also. So we're going to get that cleaned up as part of this process.
The critical part is always, in reality, is the 911 addressing. And 911 and postal service, those two databases have to cross over, and I'll just, one of the issues that we have, actually, we're, the question has been, where does town, depends on, it's where that and 104th Street, you know, where does that change at? And no matter what point you pick, four addresses are wrong. Right. I mean, you're either going to change four of them on Town Lane or four of them on 104th Street. We've got some others on other streets. It's probably a bigger, a bigger process. And then, even if you look at this, if I go across the street, so to speak, and what's the 100 blocks? So unfortunately, it's not a unique situation, and most of our addressing issues really came from kind of what we call the original town, so you know, you got first, second, third, fourth street, et cetera, and those hundreds blocks. And then you have the county addressing, that basically comes from north to south, and that's really what some of those areas of course created issues in just addressing over time, and 911, putting a grid on it. So we, as we go along with some of these, we try to correct those, but we also try to be cognizant of that. When we start changing addresses, that creates all kinds, whether it's a house or business or whatever, mortgages are tied to it, and, you know, 911 and all those. Our primary focus is always to ensure that the 911 addressing, that that database is what everybody knows, because that's really the life-saving piece of it.
There's three plaques in putting into one?
Three parcels being put into one parcel.
Where is the third? Either one is, don't visit that, any of them?
There's a very narrow sliver at the very north end of that property. It's not very big at all, and that is the 16, I believe that's the 1601 address property.
So is that being added to or removed from?
It would be incorporated into one parcel. It's there already, so it's going to be part of the single parcel.
So those two addresses, the 16, they will be eliminated.
1601 and 16, or 1661 and 1675 are the ones that are likely to be eliminated, yes. And that'll become 1801. And that does line up, there's an address across, directly across from the school building, I believe it was 1800, so it's at least in that geography location.
So to answer the question, where is 104th Street in council?
Basically at, I'm trying to think.
Uh, basically at, uh, I'm trying to think of reading this. Kind of, kind of the first one? If you're going north, it's right up there at that first curved area right there. You can't remember. The, uh, the subdivision that's, uh, Edge Hill. Edge Hill. Technically that's, it seems to be the point of change over.
From what to what?
Depending on how you're going north. Yeah, and if you're coming from South.
Coming from Edwardsville Drive north, what is that right there?
It's one hundred and fourth, and you go north off of Edwardsville Drive, and then it converts up north of Edge Hill is where it converts into the other. You can go right around that intersection of, of Edge Hill, one hundred and fourth and Town Lane. You've got addresses north of there that are one hundred and fourth, north of Edge Hill, and you got ever south of it, Town Lane. And there was a point where the post office said, we're not gonna go into the manor, we're gonna work out. People would have whatever, they'd write on their address, you know, one, two, three Town Lane, and the post office has it as one, two, three, one hundred and fourth street. That, that intersection right there, it would be complicated for some reason. Unfortunately.
Is that another property where the house is being built?
Yes.
At four acres, that's legally one hundred and fourth.
Well, thank you, but should we cancel this?
Okay, the legal discretion of one hundred and fourth.
I'm, I'm not this brainy. Look next door. I'm not commenting because there are worse situations that would. Yeah, okay. So, but if you look at the address on either side, it might be here.
But I guess the real issue is that the police are firing nowhere to go.
That's correct. That's the big thing.
That's all.
So far, so far, we're, we're hanging in there with that. They've got it too.
We don't want them to deprive the residents of their bills either.
We trust our database when it comes to that piece.
Are you need three motions?
Yes, I'd like independent motions for each one of those. First one to approve of the preliminary plat with the conditions that are recommended by the staff and the planning commission, which those are basically technical conditions that just have to do with typo corrections and meeting the county's filing requirements. Same with the final plat at that point. And then the S U P would be to authorize the approval of the resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six.
So concerning resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six, I would make a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the changes recommended by the planning commission. Is that enough?
Well, I think you blended a couple there, so I would, I would say let's make a motion first to approve the preliminary plat with the conditions recommended by planning commissions and city staff.
Did you get that?
Yeah. And Mayor, you are at a reg. Yes, I'm being asked. So, so the state legislature changes all of it, as you said, so.
They haven't yet.
I don't.
They're working.
I'll make the motion that Zach wrote down.
Yeah. It has been moved in second to adopt the, or approve the preliminary plat for resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero six with the recommended, um, conditions of the planning commission.
Not without the, you don't need a resolution.
I don't think.
That's the part that's bad.
How you make?
Just direct, how you make?
The approval of the preliminary plat with the conditions recommended. What do you say? Got it.
Would the clerk please call roll?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes. Okay.
The second one that we would recommend is a motion to approve the final plat with the staff and planning commission recommended conditions.
I'd like to make the motion that he just stated. Make that into the motion.
He just, he's second.
You need a second. Your second, okay, I'm sorry. The motion in a second to approve the final plat with staff and planning commission recommendations. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And then the third action would be a motion to approve of resolution twenty eighteen oh six regarding the special use permit issuance.
Make the motion, wait for the, the stated.
You're good, I wouldn't do that.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the special use permit, resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero six. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And we got two of them.
So just to, just to note a couple things for you. You will find that special use permits, we will be coming forward to you with resolutions in the future. This gives us a better way of record keeping and historical documentation of the issuance of those special use permits. In the past, we were just approving them through regular motions. What we're finding with the resolutions, we get a more permanent record, which is good, because that has a clarification of all the conditions in it. It's easier for us to find and document, and then if there's any question in the future, we'll be there. And then the second item is just simply a, a challenge you to find the major business that their address is actually on the wrong side of the street.
So is there any anticipation when construction's gonna start on, on the addition?
Um, I do not know. And, do you, do you know?
Yeah.
Would you go ahead? Name.
Name the address.
Curlicetown with E T A R fix, address is twelve thirteen one hundred thirty third street, Kansas City campus. Um, we're actually, we just met our plans for construction for the city. Now we're on paperwork today. Go, plan sprint out, and it's ready to go. Construction is going to start, um, sometime in March. So they'll start breaking ground, and the first, um, the addition that's on there, the first phase of the project, is to build a cafeteria, kitchen, and a special edge use space onto that northeast corner of the building. And then once that space opens up, they're gonna be able to take, take over where the media center is right now, and turn that into an office suite, so that the nurse and all that stuff on the same side. And then they'll move the media center where the kitchen and the interiors right now. And that's part of the remodel. And, and streaming, that, that part of it's gonna happen over the summer of twenty nineteen. But the construction of the new addition's gonna happen first, so that they can open up space the other way. So that'll be open sometime in the fall next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda will be to consider authorizing the city manager to sign change order number one and acceptance of the hundred and second street improvement project.
Good evening, I'm Kansas City, Public Works Director. The next item on your agenda is for the city council to review and authorize and recommend that the city manager can sign this final change order for the hundred and second street improvement project and accept the project as of tonight, so we can start the two-year maintenance bond. The hundred and second street improvement project was awarded to Maccanay Construction on May twenty second, twenty seventeen, in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. The project actually started September eleventh, and it completed, substantially completed November thirtieth, twenty seventeen. The project included installation of store grade structures, curb and gutters, sidewalks, asphalt paving, and intersection improvements there at hundred and second and Bridgewood Avenue. And the final contract amount is three hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents, which is a five, seven percent increase in the contract amount. And the other one of the project was about eighteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That was primarily due to, um, base stabilization that we needed to imply as it would be on the subway, along, under the second street. Maccanay Construction really successfully completed the project, and then every part was the contract. So at this time, we recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to accept this final change order and, and approve this project. Just to note, um, let's say the paving probably wasn't the best quality of paving that the contractor has been known for over the years. And so there is discussion with Maccanay Construction and city staff that in the spring we're gonna revisit the final course layer to see if any, you know, reconstruction needs to be, like, programmed out of the way, or you would never surface type treatment on that. But frankly, it, you know, it really meets our requirements at this time. And, and so, you know, I'm not really certain how that's gonna go next spring, but basically the two-year maintenance bond will cover that. And the contractor has indicated that they will be willing to discuss that next spring after the winter's over, and, and see how it's, you know, how it actually continues to tumble over, over the most of the winter in the spring.
So that wouldn't be any additional cost?
No additional cost, no. That'll be in the two-year bond.
Are you, are you talking about that it's a little bit rough right now?
Um, yes, it's kind of rough. The gradation really isn't right in a couple places. Yeah, it's that nature. Aesthetically, it just doesn't look, it doesn't have the same surface course kind of as, as the other section of Kansas Avenue. Structurally, I don't think there's really anything wrong with it. It, it really meets the requirements of the APWA guidelines that are out. You know, but some of the pavement may have been cold being placed, and, um, so it just has a different aesthetic appearance than the other section of pavement. Like I said, I don't think structurally it really would require, um, any mending or remodeling at this time, but the contractor is interested in working with us on that in the spring. Just wanted you to be aware.
You know, I remember last meeting, was there an underwrite on that where we didn't have to pay the total or something? Yeah, we had, I don't remember, that was on the, I don't know which project that was on.
Hundred twenty seventeen street maintenance.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, it wasn't there.
No, that was hard, that was hard with construction, it didn't, uh, the projects.
In the past, we really haven't formalized this process, but that's what we're trying to do here. It sounded like we talked about the S U P and the resolution of that. You know, because we all, we always come to you with the contract amount, and there's always, I say always, but typically there's some adjustments to that, just, I mean, because everything is done in, 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 you know, quantity. So, I mean, you estimate there needs, does many tons of asphalt, we use more or less, et cetera. So that's really what happens, and we're just trying to formalize it. Typically, most of our projects have been state funded projects, and we don't, you know, our acceptance is really just a.
Formality.
Formality, yeah. I mean, because they manage the contract, they manage all the quantity, they manage all the change orders. We really don't have much say so in it. And what happens on those is, uh, once the project's done and closed and accepted, then it actually goes to a federal audit. And so oftentimes, we don't know literally two years later whether we owe money or don't owe money. Now, typically, we have a pretty good idea of which way it is, but, but it's not a hundred percent. So we always say, hey, look, can you tell us what it is? And everything's in the system, but because it's not closed and audited, they won't say this is what you, what the absolute total is.
I just wanna make sure we're not sacrificing any of our leverage for the correction of the, of the resurfacing and so forth, is there?
I don't believe, I, I mean, I don't believe.
Do you think there's agreement that it's substandard by both parties? I don't wanna give up any leverage we have to ensure that there's actually.
I don't believe we're giving up any leverage. Frankly, at this time, um, you know, we talked to, we, Melissa, the owner and the vice president of Maccanay Construction, and this will be covered under the two-year bond, which will start today if this project was accepted.
And that's the writing?
Excuse me?
That, that's the writing that?
It'll be, the bond, oh, yeah, it's written, it's written down, the bond.
And does that include, like, seeding? Um, good seeding and, and the washout?
And that'll be covered, yes, under the bond as well. Currently, there's still supplements up there, and it was hydro seeded, and certainly when things don't germinate in spring, there's rare spots, the two-year maintenance bond will cover that too. The contractor have to come back and receive and, you know, and maintain the whole project for two years.
But that's one of the other things, when we do state projects, you know, I think cities would always say is, we, we wish they could put a bond on those projects, but state, federal funded projects, they do not bond. And it's, they accept it, the project's done, the contractor has no obligation unless there is a failure that's a direct result of, like, if the paving failed because of workmanship or, you know, you run tests and find out that you didn't, you know, put the right grade of things. But there's no maintenance type of bond to it whatsoever. So it's kind of frustrating, uh, because then, like, things like, if there's erosion or seeding issues, you just call it back to the city, basically, and either fix it or leave it. That's why we, on city funded projects, or anyone's, we have the trouble, we put bonds on it. Because it costs a little bit, I mean, it adds, you know, maintenance bond probably add one and a half to two percent to the overall cost, but it's kind of like buying insurance, right? You hope you never use it, but when you need it, you have it. So we, we've always supported the two-year maintenance bond on, on.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, making motion that we authorize the city manager to sign the change order number one for the hundred and two street, or hundred second street improvement project with Maccanay Construction.
Okay.
It has been moved in second to prove the authorizing the city manager to sign change order number one, acceptance of the hundred and second street improvement project. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malak? Yes, driver?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Next item will be consider accepting LTC sewer improvements, lift station, enforced moves, and authorizing the city manager for at least retaining or funding.
Come up here, try to make this formal. Uh, this project, as you know, has been on the books for some time. We originally issued a, a word of bid in June twenty seventh, twenty sixteen, in the amount of eight hundred and seven thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. If you will recall, in addition to these, what we paid here, we also acquired the pump station from Smith and Loveless, which is the, the physical pumps that sits on top of a big concrete cylinder. And we bought the generator, the backup generator, that in case we have a loss of power, it will operate. I guess the good news is, we had that scenario, everything would work as it goes to the backup power. The bad part of it is, we don't know why it came on, but that's a, that's a different issue that we're working on. But as I note here, uh, this has been going on since June of twenty sixteen. The final proposed contract amount, which she digs it, is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents, which is a little more than a three percent overage, uh, or about twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. You will also recall that when we entered into the development agreement with Village South, uh, because we originally purchased everything to operate on a three-phase power system, that was the understanding until well into the project, which is part of the reason for the delay, uh, we were advised that, yes, we could have three-phase power, but it was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, uh, check to K C P N L. And we said, what are other options? And basically what we did, we're making a technical thing, simple, single-phase power to three-phase power, is what we did through a series of converters. But we also told the developer that we, because of that additional cost, and obviously the lift station is necessary for them to do the development, in the development agreement, they, uh, basically will pay up two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for any costs associated with that electrical panel change. Most all of this change order with the exception of the fencing is related to that. So in the net, we will not pay any more than we originally were gonna pay on this project. I will say that the overall, uh, it's, it's at times been a bit of a trying project, but a lot of it's just been trying to get the right people scheduled at the right time. But I think it's a good project. It certainly has opened up development. What we have, and I kind of referred to it earlier, is an issue that we had is that between the pump maker, after reaching Smith and Loveless, and this contractor, there was an electrical issue, and as a result, one of these converters basically burned up. So the question is, who's the responsible party in this, which we're meeting on? The contractor's already, uh, put the order in to purchase the replacement, so we already have that being done. And if it's their responsibility, they pay for it. If it's the Loveless responsibility, then they pay for it. But we're already getting it resolved. Good thing is, we're not pumping any sewer right now, or it could be a big region. But the contractor has agreed that because there's this unknown out there, that they would honor withholding, so instead of releasing all the retainage on the project, that we would hold back about twenty-five percent or twenty thousand dollars out of their total retainage. Right now, their retainage is, uh, we have about a little more than eighty-two thousand dollars held in retainage today. There'd be a little bit more from the final payout that would be approved with this. There'd be a little bit more from the final payout that would be approved with this. Uh, so, we would not be releasing all of our retainage, the twenty thousand dollars is sufficient to pay the cost associated with the, uh, with the converters. And again, we would have a two-year maintenance bond, so if other problems occur going forward, those would be addressed by the maintenance bond. So, our recommendation is to, uh, accept the final, uh, the final contract amount, including change orders one, two, four, and five. There was no change order number three, it got voided and never was approved, uh, they got outnumbered, see, once, uh, but with the caveat that we would hold back twenty-five thousand dollars, not less than twenty thousand, twenty-five percent, not being less than twenty thousand dollars of retainage. That I will try to answer questions.
Do you anticipate that we develop on the north end, uh, three-phase power will be delivered there?
Yes. There's three-phase, so the, the challenge with the three-phase power is, is, is this, there's three-phase power on a Hundred Tenth Street down to River View. And that is part of KCPNL's service area, but the supply of power into the KCPNL system from both directions is through BPU. So, they get their power from it. So, one of the questions that we've had was, was there enough capacity in BPU system to allow expansion of that? And we had a meeting several months ago, where we had all the parties in the room, including line dot E U C, and basically, yes, there's sufficient power, they can expand, put in three-phase power, have us think to do that. It's just getting it down the road, so we didn't want to have to go try to acquire rights of ways and easements to get all those poles that hadn't been relocated and upsized, and it was going to cause a delay. And so, this is not an uncommon mechanism for this. What our argument was is that, well, the Village South project, right, doesn't occur without the lift station, so KCPNL, you should, you know, they're, what they do is they look and say, what's the new load? And they give you a credit, so if you, if you're going to generate a lot of electricity, you might not pay anything to have the electricity brought to your property. If you don't generate very much, then you have to pay and bring the electricity, well. Their philosophy was, well, we can take it over Village South, it's right across the street, it's a fairly low cost, they're going to generate far more power than the cost of extension of utility. Our argument was, well, you should bring the power to the lift station, because that doesn't happen without that, why don't you give us credit for, you know, that, that three-phase power? In the end, basically, they said, we'll bring in the single-phase power without any cost, really power lines and poles. We didn't have to do some underground conduit and set some transformer pads, but basically, we didn't have to pay for extension of the power from KCPNL, at least to the back of the property. And I'm probably giving you more information than you wanted. Uh, overall, I mean, the project is good and it's just one of these, anytime you start changing power, I mean, if we'd known we weren't going to have three-phase power to bring in, we would have done a few things differently, but we already owned the pump station and the, uh, generator, because I suggested, can I send the generator back? We traded in and if we wanted to pay a fifty percent restock fee and we paid to buy another generator, well, that just financially didn't make any sense. So, again, it's not unusual in undeveloped areas where you have single-phase power and then you use these converters, they're called an ad phase, uh, it's not unusual. We're just not quite sure what happened in this particular case, why this one kicked on and ran. And like I say, our generator ran, it ran perfectly, it did everything it was supposed to do and ran out of gas, which is, again, is okay. I mean, the good thing is, it did what it was supposed to do, right? It lost power, it turned it on, it ran the generator, that's, that's, that's what we wanted to do. So, we're just not quite sure if it was just an electrical wiring issue or, you know, there's some other issue going on.
There's some kind of alarm or an alert that lets us know?
Well, we will, we, we did not put in, as far as this initial part of the project, whether it was known as like alarm inside the pump station, because the, in the past, the U G has handled all of those, you know, so they handle those lift stations. And that technology that's in those today is old, and so we're going to put a new system throughout all of our lift stations. But U G's also going through acquisition to put new systems in their lift stations, so we've been trying to work together to say, what is it that you're doing? And even though we'll be maintaining our lift stations, it wouldn't hurt if we have a system that also alerts them, because if I'm the treatment plant person and all of a sudden I see that I have a lift station coming on that's, that's high water flow, I know I'm going to get a lot more, you know, flow coming into my lift station, my power, my power into my treatment plant, and I want to make sure why that's happening. And if an alarm's going off and nobody's answering it, and again, I'm on the, the treatment side, it's good to know. So, we're trying to see if we can work out a situation where, yes, it'll call us first, but will also alert U G. And if they're putting in new systems at the same time, can we make those two work? It may or may not happen, but that's the reason we didn't purchase it at the time. Before it goes operational, it will have an alarm system that, at minimum, it will contact people via telephone style call down and will alert you to the types of alarm that's going on, preset, the high water, low water, pump not operating, things like that.
Was the issue with the manhole ring?
Uh, they were just, they probably got pushed and so they were offset and they were allowing groundwater into the, uh, into the meter pit. We do have groundwater issues up there, but, uh, there wasn't any when we started, but of course, we tore all that up and it just released a lot of water. So, we get water into the, into the meter pit, which isn't what we would like, but you've got, you know, that's a force main and the meter itself can be submersible. So, right now, what we do is we pump it out every so often, but the rings aren't lined up, so if you had to climb down in there, you know, they're, they're offset and they're letting water in. Clearly, they're letting water in, so we want to stop any infiltration. I don't know if they.
Those were fixed on Friday.
They were fixed on Friday.
The rings are bound to shoot anymore.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they, with the weather, they got to a minute. So, that, that's resolved. So, the recommendation would be to, I consider, so the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to, to sign the, the, the final, to set the final contract amount at the eight thirty-two, six seventy-six, eighty-one, uh, and authorize the release retainage less twenty-five percent or twenty thousand dollars until such time as the plan and the, the systems for the operation. It would start with warranty period, though.
And is that the two-year?
Yes, it's a two-year maintenance bond as well. Again, these are bonds, just so, you know, a lot of people give warranties, but what happens in a bond, they actually have to submit a bond to us. Same thing on the Village South when, when we accepted the project. So, they give a bond that names us. If we have a warranty problem, we call them and say to the contractor, hey, we've got this warranty problem, and they say, eh, we're not going to take care of it, or they go out of business or whatever. Then you contact the bonding company and then the bonding company hires a contractor to fix it. Contractors don't want their bonds being pulled on that, because once you have your bond, you know, filed against and the bonding company pays money, your ability to get bonding in the future goes away. Kind of like us with having, you know, bond ratings when we issue bonds, you know, you want to make sure you don't do anything that makes you lose your bond, where you could make it really hard in the future to, to get that kind of protection.
So, in order to get the three-phase moved down, that can be incorporated into development agreements for the properties along that?
Development agreements can be incorporated to future TIF districts if that's what we do. You could use TIF dollars for those types of approvals, that's a public improvement even though it's done by the power company. Those costs will be eligible in the future development agreements. It'd be part of it, not really, I mean, if we did road widening, I mean, they would have to relocate the poles, we would have to acquire right-of-way in that different situation. And even the poles that they put into the lift station, they were put in in such a way as the, the three-phase power, that, that extra wire can be added, they don't have to go back in and rebuild all, but it is part of what we planned. So, the pole and its spacings and all that is designed for that additional wire that would be necessary. Even the conduit and even, there's a pad, there's only a pad set for the transformer and everything.
So, are you comfortable with the twenty-five thousand, five hundred overround or?
Yes.
Are we able to?
We'll recoup almost all of that through the development agreement. The only thing we wouldn't specifically recoup from this particular piece would be the eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixteen cents related to the fencing. That would not be something with the contract that, that the Village South developer would be responsible for, it's not part of what was it, but it had to do with the electrical service and related costs. I, I think, I don't know what the, the actual number is, but in reality, you know, all but that on here and there's probably at, at least another twenty thousand dollars related to KCPNL, et cetera, that will, if we could, do that in return. Once we close this, we'll actually build the developer for those initial costs. So, you want to do it, so you give me half, kind of the final number.
I'll make the motion, but I sure don't know how to say it.
Can I ask a question first? I'm sorry, um, during the, the only time the public can speak is during the public comment section.
Okay.
You, you can ask the question after the meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
I think I would like to make the motion to allow the city manager to accept the LTC sewer improvement for the final contract amount of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents. And to release retainage for the project until it's fully operational.
Yeah, we'll, we'll release everything to twenty-five percent or it's slowed down.
With the release of everything to twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Is that it?
As it been moved in seconded to approve the acceptance of the LTC sewer improvement, lift station, forced mains, and authorizing the city manager to release retainage of the project, um, to.
Read fully.
Never mind, just, we got it. What he said, what you wrote down. Could the clerk please call it?
Kay, huh?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
I'd like to say that also, this has been a long time coming up there and I appreciate the efforts that all of you have gone through to make this a reality.
Glad to do it. It's not the smoothest project I've ever had.
I'm glad that we have you to give us through this.
Hey, Viter, your first line?
Uh, just a, a few quick things. Number one, uh, you will be in a future agenda, I'm not sure when, but are we one of the next couple? We will have, relative to Village South, the public improvements are pretty much completed and so it's just been having some final inspections and so I think those have been done. Uh, so we'll come to you, and the difference there was we'll accept those, because those were built by a private developer and we're accepting them as public improvements and that's also will result in that bond kicking off for the public improvements only, right? So, the, in our case, the, the storm sewer, the curved gutter street sidewalks in the sewer system. As far as the water and electric, you know, those are separate utilities and they have their own process, so. The second thing about Village South, uh, as I told you, they were planning to submit a new application for the site to, to basically change that. They have done that, I will tell you, it's in the preliminary stages, but what they've submitted is a project that would include a ten-story, two-hundred-and-eight-room, uh, hotel with the convention center and restaurant, uh, still in, in that mix as well. So, slightly more rooms, uh, the convention center space is about where it was at previously and then the restaurant. They, they've changed some of the formatting, but it's still on the same design, uh, still conceptually the same, but it will require, they go back through the planning process for the preliminary, you know, update the preliminary plan, a new final plan. So, that'll be hitting, I think in March, is that correct?
Yes, they're planning to send it in March.
So.
And it'll have to go through public hearing then?
It does have to go through, yes.
Do they consider, um, like fire truck emergency response?
That would be one of the discussions, absolutely, so, because it is different. I mean, uh, I mean, building-wise, I come, you know, as far as, I mean, we're kind of in the site plan, a little bit of that, so, uh, that will be coming forward, uh, through the process over the next couple of months. Autumn Fest, we just, so, I mean, I know it's a ways off, but, you know, we told you we're kind of taking our summer family picnic and combining it with, uh, what has been Adventist Days and Autumn Fest, et cetera, so we can merge those together and set the date for, uh, September twenty-second, a Saturday. So, we're going to kind of follow that family event format. There may be some like the, a few things Friday night, but not necessarily music and things at this point, but still there. So, if anybody wants to get involved in that process, we'll take all the help we can give, but as you know, it's, takes a lot, takes a lot of people doing a lot of things to make that happen. And then the last thing, just remind everybody, uh, that the governing body institute comes up, uh, April twentieth and twenty-first and, can you get this year?
Yes.
Yes, especially, I, I believe it's Kay, huh, it's, you know, already expressed interest in going, they have a new, the new governing body, so for those people that are really at city councils, but it's not limited to that, so, uh, we're discussing legislative issues, we'll talk about things that are going on in the city, so I encourage if you're available, it's fairly close to you to speak here. And if you need any help getting registered, let Zach know and we'll get that figured out.
Seen anything on that yet?
They just released the agenda for it, I think, today or late last year, so. They had to hold the date and stuff that went out.
Forward whatever you need.
And I'm glad to be back. I, I appreciated my vacation, it was a very nice, uh, trip, uh, and we tried to do a little bit of good while we were involved with our district a while long and, but it was too. For me, it's always a nice, we, uh, so, glad to be back, but I'm not sure about the weather and we came back, it was fifteen degrees, we left there seventy-two degrees, so. I couldn't stay with the weather there.
Doctor, are you going to make any comments?
No.
Not to report on the place where.
Okay, thank you. Take care.
Excuse me. Sure.
Go ahead. We need maybe where we had, uh, three significant weather events last summer, June, July, and August. We took a lot of tree damage in June, we took a lot of tree damage in August, and through the process, we submitted our initial damage assessments that wind out Canadian emergency payments. Presidential declaration was actually issued for the storm event from the twenty-second of July through the twenty-seventh of July, which was the result of the damage at, I can't remember.
Nine Days Street.
Nine Days Street, Beth's Creek and.
Steel Road.
Steel Road, Hundred Second Street. Presidential declaration was declared and approved, so starting the last month, myself and this fighter have been working on a disaster declaration for reimbursement, presented some changes to the FEMA guidelines on reimbursement. I mean, it's now covered, seventy-five percent by the federal government, fifteen percent by the state emergency management, and the remaining balance is on the city. Um, all of our work was done and has been submitted now, so we paid for it. All of our work was done and has been submitted now, so we paid for it out of normal and routine. Budget operations last year, however, we did incur some expenses with it, so we have finished to finalize, submit most of stuff. We've got one or two more meetings to adhere to, however, it's part of a broader $7 million claim or sell for the presidential declaration. So it did be upwards of nine months or longer before we hear anything back on that. Fire department put in both the grants during last month's window. The process with regional grant and then the local grant were both done. The peer reviews will take place in April, so they should start making notifications on grant awards sometime around May. Those will usually drag along for several months until it's closed out and some of their expenses. It's only over this time.
Do you want to, so the, the regional grant is the air pack one, and it's been in the local one?
Was the turnout gear. We buy two or three since turnout gear every year. We've got some gear that is approached for 20-year markets, some of our park power are using. There's a smaller grant fund called the micro grant, it's less than $25,000. We submitted for eight sets of turnout gear that were placed, the sets are close to 20 years old and over 20 years old, that we still have personnel wearing at a park power volunteer status. So it was a $17,000 grant that are matching 5% to be somewhere around $800. Unfortunately, we did already purchase our lot replacement this year, not knowing when the grant was going to go. We'll just see how it goes with the grant process. I, I do know that the initial run was 36,000 grants received for the city's firefighter grants, so you know, you're taking the chances of the match up there.
The chief, may or may not, but he's, he's a candidate again to the peer review, so we'll just wait to see if he gets selected as well.
And we've done it, done it twice. I've been here in, as we've alluded, they have sent down from the International Association of Fire Chiefs, if I'd be interested, again, if it's accepted, I will not be here for two weeks and spend the first week in Jamaica, which is already planned. We all plan on Saturday and leave on Sunday, so.
That's probably.
So it's been good.
Yeah, bring it up to make.
Forty-five days.
Okay. Tammy, have you got any, anything to report?
I've not.
Okay, thank you. Margaret? Dave, I forgot to ask you, I'm sorry.
She has a report, I think she has one.
Yeah, he has.
Tammy, any updates on the house with all the code violations? I don't think we've had an update on that. That's in, in the court system, so we do monthly inspections, and then we give it back to the courts. There's violations, and I have to give it back to the court, just to get back on the docket.
Any leads on our replacement, or how's that going?
On our replacement, have the codes of course not? I guess, we, we hired.
Oh, yeah.
We mentioned that last meeting, I believe?
Yeah.
Maybe not. She should be here the next meeting.
That's right.
So, yeah.
She'll be here this meeting.
Yeah, she'll be here next meeting, so.
Well, since she wasn't here, I thought I'd maybe.
No, no, no.
She's still here, but she's here four weeks, and, yeah, she's actually enjoying it, so.
Good.
We are in the process, as maybe you or don't know, but for our court clerk, she's accepted a position with a member of the local government, and so we're in the process of hiring a new court clerk. I'm mutually, thank you. Any other?
I think that's all I have, except for one minor, not minor, but a big one. I don't know, I think her, this is the fifth year I've sat up here, I don't know if I've ever instigated, but thank you to everybody for all of your hard work. I've always agreed with everybody. It can't be said enough to everybody, so.
A team.
It is a team effort.
All the other.
We get to sit up here, easy for us to hear all of our work you do, so thank you all.
I've got to, got to say the same thing that she did about this thing. The, the sewer is really exciting to me, and, you know, the mayor and I have been involved in that since a long, long time. I was really happy to see that happening. And Dave, excuse me not knowing how to make the motions that you need, but if it's good for the school, it's good for all of us.
That's all of that.
Thank you for all that work on that. And the, the projects down in the industrial park, appreciate all the efforts on that. There's just big companies, national, international companies that are here and there, so thank you for that.
I would just note, so Scott's sitting here, he does a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff, too, he truly does. I realize he's our bond counselor, and you, and you've seen him at this time, but, you know, there's a whole set of conversations that occur between the bankers and their financiers and their attorneys and all that stuff, that, you know, Scott just handles some of it. And I'll always say, I've got a call from this company, dah 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 dah, or wind out IUC, and he'd say, okay, here's the basics of it, and Scott really does it.
It's all the work. In my opinion, it's getting done right, and it's really appreciated. I don't, probably didn't thank you nearly enough, but it's something you'll be proud of for that person.
Um, just quickly, I'd like to thank Tammy and Chief Litter for their extra work in giving the reimbursement for BEMET, and savings is more we can help our community with, and I know that's a lot of thankless work that you guys do. And I just wanted to mention, we were downtown the other, well, downtown, I overspelled the other day, and noticed some police officers helping push a car out in the middle of the road, and, and I don't think that's uncommon around here, but, and I tried to get my camera out in time to post it online, but just, just the, the neighbor, neighborly feel that we have, and our first responders and our city workers always just going, far beyond the line of duty to help their neighbors, I think is fantastic, and, you know, see it everywhere.
The FedEx expansion is pretty exciting, because I think it was a year or two ago they were considering moving that location somewhere else, so it's nice to see them making a major investment in Edwardville, which implied that they're going to be here for a while.
And it adds about 150 workers to their workforce.
Well, excellent. Excellent. You know, they have the billboard going at, looking for work, employment. The other thing, with the industrial, you're reminded again tonight, that the industrial part just keeps growing, and, and updating and modernizing, and that 20 million dollar investments, you know, they're, they're planning on being here a lot.
Absolutely.
And so that's exciting that we don't, we're not out looking for people to fill empty spots as much as we are having people expand and make a bigger commitment to our city. When was the website updated? Was it recently updated, some new?
We added some graphics on the front to the banner bit, and you, we'll, we'll switch things in an hour.
It looks really good. Very nice, really nice.
I think it is, you know, part of the contract, I mean, you're a civic plus, and host that for it. I think at the end of the third year, we must be getting close to that, there, we get basically an opportunity to, you know, do a, kind of a rework in the face of, of the site. We've been talking about, there's a few things about it that would be easier to regulate, put in a whole different order, different titles.
Yeah, we're, there's still some line of order that they need to get updated, you know, each individual apartment, arrangement, to do it, and we're kind of work through it as we can, it's just the, the process is a little bit, like, the homepage anyway, gets updated pretty frequently.
Really like, because obviously an emphasis on people, and, and really like that. I think that's a great image to put forward. And one last thing, did I hear that Kansas legislators are considering altering the voting abilities of the council?
Well, you know, so the, the bill has to do, so when you read statutes throughout, it, it, sometimes it says council, and sometimes it says governing body, and the general thinking is that governing body includes the mayor, because that is the governing body, but it's not consistent really across the state and even locally, et cetera. So what they're proposing, at least right now, is that it would, with the exception of, I think, votes and ties, that everything else would go to a local ordinance that would have to be adopted by a two-thirds vote. Some of the questions come down, I mean, some of the statutory, this is where there's the, the budget, right? So that one's always had mayors as an original voter, and planning commission items is always, at least, that's the way most people have always read it, but some cities don't do it that way. They just do the city council, the mayor doesn't vote on their budgets, or doesn't vote on that. So really what they're saying is they're going to give it as a local option to say, what items does the mayor vote on as an original vote, and what is and not. The hard part right now is we're trying to decide, are there some things that there's no discretion by the local government, like, you know, planning and zoning items, you know, things like that, or are they going to lead a total to the city's discretion? The concern always is when the legislator gets involved in a, in local governments.
And they're going to say, so far, they're not meddling, but they're, they're interfering.
Yeah, I wish they'd keep their nose in the paper.
Yeah, so, so that, that's the concern. I mean, it's great if they say the local government can set what those voting processes are, that's fine. It, it's, it's the but that would worry about, the but, this, 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 or, or they limit it more than it is today. Right now, right now, it's, I would say it's in the positive category of what.
They don't have enough to do in Topeka, then maybe they should take more vacation. This is one of the things to do.
Impossible.
I really have nothing more to, to add to that other than that we all appreciate the staff and their work, and with that, be our journey.